We'll start off with prayer.
Good Lord, thanks for this beautiful day and thank for all the blessings you've given us and be with our soldiers overseas, Lord, and keep them safe and thank for the presence we have, all these things, bless your name, amen.
Attention, salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone out today, um, we got quite a bit of stuff to go over. Um, I've got a couple of announcements, I'm gonna start off with them and, uh, now I'll just start off with Chuck first, then I'll come back to this.
Okay.
All right, update on the Chevys Bridge, um, basically we're in a holding pattern waiting on our lot. We have submitted plans to them in March the eighth for construction plans and we have not received any comments back from them at this point.
March eighth, this year?
This year, yes, sir. And so we've been waiting for two months for them to come back with comments on construction plans. We do have a few comments back from the Bridge Bureau and they said there would be more comments. We passed on those comments, we have received them to our bridge designers, but they said to expect more and we have not received any more from them. We have, um, submitted several times for the right-of-way documents and they have been back and forth with us, asking for different information, changing scales of drawings and making a few minor changes and hopefully, I know I've said this before, but hopefully this week they'll have that finalized and we can start acquiring right-of-way.
Well, Chuck, I hate to tell you, but last week I had an hour with this guy, Mr. Hodges.
Yes.
He's waiting on y'all too. He's saying, "We're waiting on CDG, we're waiting on CDG."
We have submitted documents-
So, I don't know what's going on.
I've got the record where we've submitted-
You know, working on the guys in, in the paper and everybody's waiting.
Right.
We're going on your word.
This bridge to be, yeah, this bridge being led in month of May and here's the May.
Right.
So, are we going to that project in May?
It won't be in May.
That's what I- So, y'all just told us a story then?
Well, it wasn't intentional story, we were knowing based on submitting our documents on time and we just haven't got any reviews back on time from ALDOT. So, what we've meant our schedule, they just haven't got any comments back to us in time.
So, do we need to get ALDOT to come up here and let's sit down with them and talk about it and-
I'd be glad to.
Try to get this hashed out and-
We'd be glad to do whatever it takes to keep it moving forward, I don't want to-
Yeah, a couple of months.
Yeah, a couple of months.
Well, I know, but, yeah. Each one of them has to submit something and then the other one has to approve it and we just need to get to the bottom of the approval and submit it.
Well, I think, my, if you'd, Bijon's over that project and he knows more about it as much as he does, so I think we need to coordinate and meet with them and let them be a little bit closer together.
Yeah.
Whoever's missing, I don't know who's missing. I don't know who's a holdup. Now, you pointing fingers at them, they won't point fingers at you. I don't know who, I don't want to point fingers at.
Let's get together and, you know, talk it over face to face, I'd be glad to do that.
Who is our contact now with the state?
It's Derek Hodges.
Right, okay, 'cause I know Wade was.
Yeah, Wade was, he was on-
And Wade left and Derek did over.
And this guy, Derek Hodges, he's the one I've been talking to.
Okay.
And he told me, "No way under the sun, we're gonna let this project in month of May."
Well, what we need to do is, is get Derek up here or we need to go down there in one and get this hashed out.
Right. I'd like to know the dollar amount that we've already paid him.
We paid him hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to that CDG and all you guys signed it forty-five in the contract. I don't know, when is your time was up, as far as your contract?
No, no, I haven't seen the contract.
Well, I've got the contract, do you know what it is in the back of that page showing that?
I don't know if there is that timeframe in there really. I didn't find one, I looked over and I couldn't find it.
Surely y'all have some kind of time frame about your part, what you got to do. So... But, the bottom line is, Chuck, that we got to get this project led by this year before October. The mayor's already got the letter that this money is gonna be gone. For five, six years I've been fighting for this bridge and got the money and someone didn't do their homework.
I bet you coordinating with him and getting the making set up with the guy that you know that's gonna be over this project and him-
Well, I've been guys sometimes this week, I'll call him tomorrow.
We don't wait three weeks now.
We'll talk about next week.
I don't wanna wait.
And we got to get this project going.
Yep, I agree. Well, in the morning you need to call and get that set up.
But, well, I will.
You got his number?
Uh, yeah, I got his number, yeah. 'Cause they telling me that y'all the one not doing your work, so-
And everybody in that county-
If it's the state board, trust me, I can do follow-up on it or we got people that can follow up on it. I assure you that.
Yeah.
As long as you all do what you got to do, you on your part.
Right, we have submitted everything-
I don't want to hear to say, "Well, we're waiting on CDG," we don't want to hear that anymore.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna say it either. And I don't wanna be the holdup at all, I really don't.
As far as DOT, I follow up on it, if I'm not, I go higher.
Okay.
The people in that area is real curious what's going on and they keep asking us and getting hammered, you know, why, why, why is this not getting done, it's been, what, over a year, two years?
Well, actually, it'll be six years.
They don't think it's gonna happen and we're trying to get this thing going forward. Whatever we gotta do, Bijon.
Yeah.
I know the Patriot program is a huge program and ALDOT's pretty much understaffed on that, so that's one reason it's been a little bit slower.
That's not what they tell me.
Well, let's, let's get them together and let's figure out what's going on.
Okay.
All right. I need a time frame in here.
Thank you.
You just let me know?
Yeah, I'll call you tomorrow as soon as I set up the meeting. Would the mayor, any council wants to talk that time to?
I'll be there.
I will be there.
Is it about if we stay after the meeting as well today or just wait for the phone call and have another meeting?
No, you just need to contact him in the morning, after he gets the making set up. We don't let the left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing anymore, we're gonna coordinate it ourselves.
Yeah, I'll be available.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
I'll have it.
Give you an update on the Bruiser Road Bridge project.
Let me calm down a little bit first.
Okay. You let me know when you're ready to go.
Go ahead, baby.
I talked, um, I guess it was last Wednesday, anyway, I was talking with Derek Hodges to find out where we were on there. We were waiting on them about the curb height and the slope programs. Derek got with the innovative programs and they got approval back Friday to let the city go with five-foot curb height on top of the culvert and two-to-one slopes, which, short version of that makes your culvert shorter, less expensive.
Sure.
Which will save you money, so we've got approval on that. The letter for the county to do the work has been sent to Ben Luther, he's got it and he's gotta bring it up before the commission, get them to approve it and sign it, that'll be back to him, uh, to the DOT. Uh, I need permission from DOT on the right-of-way approval and, uh, I'll call Derek tomorrow and see where that's at. They've had everything on it, so, uh, should, shouldn't be any issues with it on this.
If I get the meeting with him, I'm gonna call you.
Okay.
I want you to be there too, after that meeting, we're gonna talk to you about the right-of-way also.
That'll work this way.
Right-of-way issue on this project is no big deal, I think Richard's already talked to owners, they're all willing to donate the property, so my assignment is, so it should go pretty quick.
Okay.
Sign one doesn't make the sign more.
Yeah, he's over all of this project.
Other than that, um, that is it, the envi- um, Friday, Lori Conley sent me four forms that they needed on the environmental, so we'll get those turned right back around to her and, uh, and that should-
Did you have to deal with the Corps of Engineers on this project?
The, which engineer?
With the Corps of Engineers?
No, that, well, we're gonna have, we'll have to have that permit on there because we're gonna be working in that crease.
Do you have that?
We do not have the Corps permit yet, no.
Have you applied?
That was one of the things that was in that form.
Who's supposed to apply for it?
Will be applying for it.
You need, you need to go ahead because we don't want to ask that Corps of Engineers over.
Uh, I would get that done, uh, I actually would've, would've already done that, I actually thought Lori was sending that, but that's, I'll take care of it.
The reason I'm asking you is that they haven't done anything for Chevys Bridge yet, CDG hasn't.
Okay.
I got a question. Does he have, do they have to wait until Chevys Bridge is done before they get started?
No, 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 that's a different project.
Well, in one of the emails we got here a while back, it said that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it said that they wanted to, to bid Chevys before we're done building.
Who's that email from?
I can't remember, who was it from? You remember, men, men had a book that-
I just wanna make sure, I wonder why.
Yeah, there's a lot of people in, the, the theory from the state was, they were looking at Chevys and they said if Chevys was over budget, they were wanting to take the money from Boozer and convert it to Chevys.
I see.
To get that one done and then it would kind of be whatever's left, but, you know, my opinion, seems like the city should have some input in that.
Yeah.
If you're saying that we wanna move forward with both of them.
Yeah, they wanna see how much the project is going for.
If it's a race, you're outrunning a whole bunch.
You're ahead right now, little bit.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna apply for the permit this week?
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
We'll get, we'll get right on it. I can't do yesterday, but, uh, but I can jump on it, uh, I can jump on it tomorrow, so.
Just the people in communities I have to get to, so I mean, you know, we just got my-
And we just don't, we just don't wanna miss the opportunity to get this and get filling.
We understand that.
I have not heard say, "Well, we're waiting on light engineers yet."
We want, we wanna keep it that way, so.
Everything's about CDG, so.
Okay.
See what you can do, push it up.
And keep us updated though every time, if we, if we need to do something, then, then you just need to let us know, so we'll know to do that, don't hold back or don't wait till the next meeting.
Don't wait till the next council meeting, just call us.
Yeah.
I'll do that. Now, I think, I think maybe the next thing we have that meeting is try and get some clarification on them and make sure they're not just sort of shelving us over here saying, "Well, we're gonna wait till Chevys is bid," so there's no point in getting in a hurry here, so, at least get everything done where we're, we're ready to let it, so.
Our lawyers ready anxious to go and get the right-of-ways for us.
Yeah, we got the mouse ready, as soon as I get the thumb up, I can give them to you now and you go ahead and start working on them if you want to, so, I don't expect there to be any changes there, it's pretty straightforward.
But, if he's saying he's not gonna make any changes, you might as well go ahead and send it to her, let her, let's get it started.
I can't imagine why there would be changes, they've looked at it, you know, two, three times and then had to file them.
Right, you can change the amount of things under there closing, can't you?
Amika, I'll go ahead and send them to you.
I think that's what it is, but, yeah, I can go ahead.
Yeah, why don't you do that, get that started?
She can go ahead and just call you.
Which I feel like nothing gonna change, myself, once they establish the right-of-way.
And once they've approved the walls and the slopes and all that, every right-of-way just kinda falls into place.
Falls into place anyway, yeah.
It does, they, they kinda wanted you to look at that first, which is, you know, it kind of, we got enough right-of-way to get all that stuff done, of course, we're, they approved the, the smallest footprint, so.
And normally, DOT, they're trying to save money too, same time, and if they don't need this piece of corner, they, they try to, you know, adjust it what they don't have to buy.
Yeah.
In this case, if they're gonna donate the property, I don't see any problem, so go ahead and get that started.
Good job, Luke.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you for your time.
I'll call Lisa.
Oh, yeah.
I'll call everybody.
Thank you.
Just don't ever call you.
Call me anytime, you know?
Get them watching.
I guess.
This is, uh, we have been talking about vacating right-of-ways for the last, basically two, two and a half years, okay? So, here's, here's two documents that's got a lot of right-of-ways on it and I'm just, I'm just telling you about them tonight, uh, you can all look them over. Uh, what we'll have to do is, is in a few weeks, we'll, we'll have a public hearing of these documents, all the people, that's landowners, will be sent, um, should be sent some kind of letter explaining that, that this is gonna happen or, or at least we're going into a public hearing about it. Um, at that, at that time, they will come and, and look at it, uh, we'll discuss it and, uh, then make a decision on, uh, giving this, giving this, uh, these right, these alleyways up. And they're all listed in these documents right here and this, um, our attorney has worked real hard on this to get it, to get it going and, uh, so, this will probably come, come around, I'll say probably maybe the first meeting in June or somewhere along in there. Does that sound like right?
Yes.
Okay, and it'll be a public hearing and we'll have that at that time. So, I just gonna explain that we are still working on those alleyways and we're getting really, really close to having that public hearing about those. Anybody that wants to see them here a little bit in?
Where is this out of where?
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
Yeah, these are, these are scattered all over the city.
About years and years ago, what they did, they, like over Clifton subdivision, they had alleyways in behind people's houses for the garbage structure run through. There would never was any roads put through there, so they never was used and now they're all rolled up and all we wanna do is give them back to the property owner.
Yeah, and they weren't, you know, they probably wasn't designed big enough for the kind of garbage structure we have now. They're, they're, they just weren't-
Designed for those back then.
Yep, so.
Yeah, I thought we wanted to make it clear, we're not taking anybody's property.
No, we're not, we're actually giving this property back, yes.
How many others want to make it clear, if anybody's out there listening?
Just some given number.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the other thing, uh, Farmers Market will start June, uh, the first Thursday in June and, uh, it, it'll be coming up here before too long, it'll be at four o'clock.
Same place?
Yes, we'll have it here in the park. Uh, the car, the car show cruises in second Saturday of the month, um, that'll be not, this coming Saturday, it'll be a week from there, uh, that'll be coming up at, from five to eight on Saturday, second Saturday. Uh, the next thing I have, um, is we've been, we've been working with Morton Associates and Kim Irwin out of Abberle, she's been looking about helping us with, uh, with the road up here in Rainsville, about a grant and she told me today to go ahead and announce this, that, that she's got pretty well everything we need. She thinks by the next meeting she'll have all of the documents, uh, resolution for us to file and, and get this, and possibly get this, uh, this grant. Now, it's, uh, it's gonna be a, about a, uh, seventy-five, seventy-five, twenty-five grant and we'll be able to redo Rainsville down to Paragon.
That's awesome.
And, uh, the reason that is, is because Paragon is building on, so we're able to use an ADECA grant, which means if you've got, if you're building on and you're hiring new employees, then you get an opportunity to get a grant like that, it's, it's through the ADECA. So, anyway, that's, that's something that's coming up probably at the next meeting, but I just kinda wanted to inform everybody that that was, that was going on. Uh, the next thing I have is we're going to hire a thirty-hour person at the library and we'll post for that for one week and that will, will, the, the posting will run through May the eighth at four o'clock, uh, and Sarah will do the, uh, she'll, she'll go through the applications and, and make a recommendation to me and we'll go from there. So, that's the, that's the timeframe on it, starting tomorrow through May the eighth.
Where are we gonna also start our cleanup this, this month, or that?
Think so, yes, that's right.
Our cleanup.
Yep, now, on our cleanup, or you wanna talk about it?
No, you go ahead, I just-
Uh, on our cleanup, what we, what we normally do is we have it behind the shop here, uh, anybody in Rainsville or Five or Savania can bring a, a sanitation ticket and put stuff in that dumpster. Uh, that's just the way we do it, to keep it clean, because if you put those dumpsters out in town somewhere, they're gonna make a mess around them. So, we like to keep ours a little bit cleaner and, and, uh, a little bit more orderly, so that's, that's the way we're gonna do it. And we've done it that way in the Five's.
Give the hours to, and they open Saturday.
They're open, they're open till lunch on Saturday, uh-
Eight to four, five to twelve?
Yeah, you know the hours.
Eight to tw- I, I think it's eight to twelve.
On Saturday?
On Saturday.
And then in the regular day it's, what, seven?
Seven to six.
Seven to six.
Seven to six, yeah, we've got a guy that's staying over, gonna stay with it, so Anthony's gonna stay over.
It's the same hours as last year.
So, seven, seven in the morning to six in the afternoon through the week and eight till twelve on Saturday, so. All right, uh, I'll start off with, uh-
Mayor, I've got two or three things. One is, uh, the chief and assistant chief, I think their ninety days is up, I'll bring that up to go ahead and make them a permanent, uh, coming off of the appropriations. And also, we had hired officer last council meeting and looks like he's not gonna work out, we had to buy his time, where he was actually working and we're not gonna do that, so, uh, we interviewed another guy, his name is Casey Jones, he works with the Scottsburg Police Department and he's not tied up to any contract or anything like that, so I'll bring that up to have him tonight.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Byron?
Mayor, I got a couple things, uh, need to put a street light up at the corner of Grand, Exstate and VFW Road, uh, that's that new subdivision up there, be up there, then we gotta have some, uh, more dumpsters, which is a good problem to have 'cause they're all running out, we don't have any, uh, it's gonna run about eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, that's for eight yards and four yards.
Okay, how many do you buy?
How many is that?
Uh, may, uh, I think it's, uh, four, four yards and four eight yards.
Okay.
I might have mistaken.
I think that's all Ohio. Oh, Derek?
Uh, I'll be bringing up tonight, since Derek Husky to advance the EMT school, uh, it's twelve hundred dollars for up to, uh, we've had some money donated to us and I'm close to four grand, I know we've used some, but we still got some money left over in that that we're gonna use. Basically just gives them that much more schooling and we can do more for our community. Uh, we're gonna try to get several of these guys to the advanced EMT side. Um, Justin Harper, he's gonna be going to Rupton School and went and bought some books for him, they put ninety bucks. Also gonna officially appoint a fire chief, uh, he couldn't be here tonight due to some family issues, he took, he was sick or something. Um, also, I wanna brag, we got, uh, eighteen volunteer firefighters out of twenty right now, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Pretty accurate.
Okay.
And also, he, Jason Parker, he, uh, he got ten thousand dollars moved over from his recruiting potential coordinator, uh, got it moved over for training for the volunteer guy, so, he's done a really, really good job with that and I wanna brag on for that. Uh, we've had a guy, Matthew McCaplin, he passed a one-sixty course, so that's, that's a good job to him. Uh, I really think that's about it, Mayor, I don't think I've got anything else.
Sounds good.
That's all I'll be bringing up.
Oh, speaking of the police and, and I'll talk about them just a little bit, the police and the fire, uh, I was, I was somewhere the other day and somebody got sick and passed out and, and the fire department got there real quick, uh, took care of the patient, uh, within just a few minutes, the police department was there, so, you know, they're, they're, they're Johnny on the spot and they're, they do a good job when they get there, they know what they're doing and so I'd just like to say that I really appreciate the, the job that they do and-
Good job.
So, thank you.
That's why I wanna send that advanced EMT in to get some more schooling, so, gotta brag on.
Mm-hmm, oh, okay, department heads. Liam, you guys fine?
Uh, that's really, that was center, I'd like for manager of the, uh, industrial development board's breakfast early in the morning at Kelly's Kitchen, I'll remember to come to that if you can, six-thirty in the morning over there.
Why you have to be six-thirty?
I don't know, I-
That's what, that's what we decide at six-thirty.
Are you all Sunday or something?
Uh, most people gonna work at seven-thirty.
Okay, uh, six-thirty is six-thirty, just there.
I'm not there, it's cause I forgot.
They got the doors there, right?
Yeah.
They're putting the doors in?
Yeah, they did them Thursday and Friday, they're finishing up a little bit, they was putting in the tile and fixing the wood, you know, the old doors had a lot bigger frames, so they're having to, you know, fill in spaces, make it look right, but, yeah, they're, they're beautiful.
Did, uh, did we ever, did we get everything ordered that we needed for the bathrooms?
Uh, we still need more toilet paper holders.
Go ahead and order that.
It's no crisis, but-
Just wanna get that taken care of.
I wanted to get it from, you know, the company that remodeled the bathrooms, hopefully they, talked to them today about it.
Okay, I'm gonna bring in a special board meeting, thank you for bringing that up.
Should I have something?
Sadie?
Uh, I only can, I thought you might want to update on Freedom Fest, other than that, it's good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, of course, Freedom Fest is June the twenty-fourth, we have all our entertainment lined up, we have our vendors lined up and we also have a lot of, uh, people that are selling merchandise at the booths and so forth like that, June twenty-fourth, exile's gonna be our entertainment and I hope you're all gonna be there.
Thank you.
Good meeting.
Sir?
Uh, well, our summer reading program registration starts today, we start with our programs in June, thank you to the local papers for getting that out there for us, we appreciate that very much. Um, I did give you all calendars so you can just see what we're doing, we're actually partnering with, um, DeSoto State Park in Little River Canyon, celebrating the Alabama two-hundred bicentennial, they're actually doing something each of the upcoming three years and this year they're focusing on exploring our places. So, we're gonna be doing canyon walks, edible plant walks, they're gonna come, send someone to do weapons demonstration, making cords, just all kinds of things.
Uh, things running well, um, we've got a lot of training on the books that we've scheduled, um, the officers are going to, um, really progressing well, we've got Huntsville PD's gonna be doing a class for us, uh, we have Alia's gonna be doing a class for us and we're proud to host those for us and some of the departments in the area. Um, things are going very well, the reserves are, already started training, they've qualified with their firearms, they all shot very well, um, they're about ready to go on the road and start working with the officers, so, things are progressing very well.
Did you check on that other place though?
I did, it's already taken care of, man.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we'll take a fifteen minute break. I'll be five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
So, we'll get started, um, we'll start off with, uh, the roll call, uh, Marshall?
Here.
Bijon?
Here.
Ricky?
Here.
Derek?
Here.
Okay, um-
First of all, I'm making motion to, uh, suspend the reading of the last council meeting.
Accept the reading.
Accept the reading.
Accept the minutes, okay? All right, we have a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting. All right, we have a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Aye, aye. Okay, now then, uh, we have a proposal to vacate some, uh, alleyways in the city of Rainsville, so I'm presenting this to the council and if they see fit to, uh, make a motion to put that out for a public hearing, then that's what we'll do. then that's what we'll do.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we put that out for a public hearing, uh, these alleyways has been in there for a long, long time, they need to be vacated, go back to the property owners, uh, 'cause they don't mean anything to us, we're not, no value to us, only back to the property owners, so I'd like for us to make a motion, uh, to put the, a public hearing, and set up at, uh, Kelly's request on the time of the date, or coordinate that with the city attorney.
Y'all, before we vote on it, uh, we'll have to, uh, run that in the, uh, legal side of the paper for two weeks, and then, uh, and then whatever the date is passed that, then we can have a public hearing.
Right.
Uh, so, we'll, we'll look at, uh, do we need to set that kind of date right now?
Um, yeah, you can.
You'll have to run for two, two weeks?
I'm not sure on the, on the, run it, it may have to run.
Four weeks.
Yeah.
I think it has to run four weeks.
So you may wanna set it on out.
So, the twenty-ninth, run to the twenty-ninth, or a big run to the.
Now, let's run, let's run it, uh, um, till I. Let me look right here.
Be four weeks on Thursday.
Uh, let's go to, it'll be five weeks, uh, June the thirtieth, June the first, that's on a Thursday. So, we could have a public hearing June the first at five o'clock here.
That's on Friday.
Thursday.
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 You thought we'd have a little lighter, 'cause, 'cause we dropped water and stuff?
Or, or it being so close, we could have it right in front of our council meeting on the fifth.
Yeah.
You're thinking.
Let's do that.
Let's just do it that way.
In front of the council meeting?
Yeah.
That would have probably.
Yes, yeah, it would be at five o'clock. It would be at five o'clock, then we would have that in the council.
And then we're gonna listen to the public thing, like, try, we'll take it with everyone, just, I'm just saying, we're having a little light.
Well, how late do you want it?
Well, maybe people's getting off work at five.
I'll go bet that I. If I'm giving you some property, I'd probably show up.
Well, I'm just, before you say they're gonna make people up here talking about it.
Well, I mean, you're, you're vacating property that has no meaning, no effect to us, and you're giving it back to the property owner, I don't see.
I'm not against giving it back to them, I'm just saying if somebody wanna talk about it, you know.
Okay, what you do is you take about ten minutes.
They got five weeks to talk about it.
You take five minutes.
It could say that be your own time.
Okay, so, uh, we'll run it in the paper legal, in legally in the paper, uh, then we'll come back with the, uh, the, the public hearing on June the fifth at five o'clock. All right, so we got, we've got that, we've got a motion, we got a time set up.
Second.
We got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Okay, um, I make, uh, I would put forth, if somebody would make a motion on this, to post, uh, a lot, uh, a thirty-hour job at the library, uh, to run from tomorrow, it'll be a one week, run from tomorrow to, uh, May eighth at four o'clock.
Make a motion. Make a motion, we post thirty-hour summer position at the library, so, starting tomorrow for one week through May eighth, five o'clock.
I'll stick to it, man.
Four o'clock.
Uh, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, uh, Marshall? Anything?
I don't know.
Please, John?
Uh, Mayor, the chief of police and assistant chief of police, his ninety days is up, I'm gonna do this one separately. I'm gonna make a motion to make chief of police as a permanent.
What?
Make chief of police a permanent employee for the city.
I, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Also, I'll make a motion to Josh Wiggly as assistant chief, and he be given a permanent position as a assistant chief.
I second.
Okay, and I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so all you have?
Uh, no, sir, I got another one, uh, we hired this officer, uh, from another city, uh, on last council meeting, it did not work out because of his contract with the city, so, uh, we cannot hire that person, but we are short because our, uh, one of our officers retired about first, actually today, and it is the first.
Yeah, Frank's today, yes, yeah.
So, uh, we interviewed this, uh, guy, he's from Scottsboro, his name is Casey Jones, he's been police officer for four years, and right now he's doing a part-time job with the city of Stevenson, I understand, so I'm gonna put that motion to hire him tonight, where he can give himself, uh, two weeks of notice, uh, to a position where he's working now.
Yeah, I, I met with him today, uh, we went through the interview process, uh, he's gonna start the seventeenth, yes.
Third, that's good.
All right.
That's on the motion on table.
I have a second, aye, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all I got.
Mr. Bottom?
Mayor, I've got a couple things, uh, first thing that, uh, was talked about, those dumpsters, those will be eight four-yard dumpsters, five eight-yard dumpsters. Be eighty-eight, thirty-eight, is what the price of those be, that's a truckload, and we get a discount by getting them at work, you know that, so I put that in form of motion.
I second.
Have a motion, a second to buy dumpsters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I said it.
Other thing I have, Mayor, we, uh, need to put another street light up, up at the corner of Grand Estate View, uh, up there and V F W Road, and that's where you turn in to that new area up there, so I, uh, make a motion to we install that street light up there in that area.
I second on that too.
Are you, uh, you putting that right there on V F W, on the side of where you're turning in? We have.
The pole's already there. The pole's already there, you just pull that up.
We have a motion in a second to, uh, add a street light on V F W Road at, at the corner of, uh, Grand Estate, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So, I have it, Mayor.
Okay, um, Russell?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to, uh, send Derek Husky to the advanced E M T school, um, for about twelve hundred dollars, like I said, we have this in our training fund, so I'll put that form of a motion.
I second his motion, Mayor, those guys is getting some real good training, and the people, citizens, who's gonna benefit from it, because, uh, they're up to date, keeping everything up, like you was talking about earlier, so I second his motion.
We're gonna try to send some more.
Yeah. I have a motion, a second, send Derek Husky to, uh, advanced training for, uh, E M T, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next I make a motion to, uh, buy books, uh, for rope school for Justin Harper, he's also gonna be going to school, there's the amount of ninety bucks, I think that's form of motion.
Have a motion in a second to, uh, for Justin Harper, for some schooling, for ninety dollars, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
It's time to, uh, appoint our fire chief, his ninety days is up, he's been doing a good job, uh, so I make a motion to, to appoint Willie Wright as fire chief.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion to, uh, appoint Willie Wright as the, uh, fire chief, have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Also make a motion to pay our monthly bills.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay monthly bills, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mayor, I'll make a motion with Will Jones, hold on, I'll go something.
Hold it, you can't go back, we don't check, we don't check.
I wanna make, make a motion to give you permission to put two clock, two battery on that clock.
Oh, man, I figured he's willing to spend some money on something.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Uh, we'll get, we'll get my receipt this way.
Might contain my motion.
Yeah, I hear you. Uh, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If you want to stay here.